The year, you get paid back six hundred. So.
I'm just clarifying it for you to know.
Do we need a line item or can we continue just to pay out or won't we pay out before?
I would just continue because that budget has gone to the state to be approved.
Right, okay.
All right. So can you guys make a motion?
Tracy, can you recap all those changes and then just put that in?
Uh, okay, so the legal deputy is going to be spread out. The extra events custodian will be at fifteen an hour. Um, the public defender ninety an hour, translators thirty-five an hour, peddlers forty, fifteen dollars a day, custodian seven twenty-five monthly. Animal control at fifteen fifty an hour. Custodian part-time fifteen fifty an hour. Preparators fourteen, preparators forty, seventeen, call for the top four.
No, but I don't.
You don't need it?
Yeah. That's just for me.
He's after his eleven fifteen years, eighteen sixty-four, eight to ten years, eighteen thirty-four, five to seven, eighteen dollars and four cents. Plat book D A S specialist at nineteen oh one an hour. Um, adult probation thirty-five seventy an hour, twenty-nine fifty-one an hour.
Can you repeat the, uh, eleven seventy-two, eleven to fifteen, eight to ten, five to seven, please?
Eleven to fifteen years is eighteen sixty-four. Eight to ten is eighteen thirty-four. Five to seven is eighteen oh four.
Okay, thanks.
Here's Tracy's motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Scott Ayers, uh, so this is.
Is there any other discussion about salary numbers? Okay, well, I have the, of the area plan, the office manager, I wanted to explain that that was discussed for a while.
Uh, that will be set when we're on the floor.
That's by me.
Yeah, please. Okay, so, uh, any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
So the adult probation changes, is that reflective of the raise given across the board? Sir county employees, the seven percent?
There wasn't any change from what was.
Probation on their paperwork, I have still checked for the paperwork that was given to us by the state on what their probation officers needed. Were supposed to be paid.
As the minimum rates, which was less than what the county employees got. So that's one of the questions that I'd asked Josh, Mr. Plouffe, previously, but, what was, the amount that was approved for them, I think, did not include the same raise that all the employees in the county got.
You're talking about probation officers, correct, yes, and that's what, that was been the norm?
Yeah, and statutory salaries, statutory salaries.
Has that been fixed historically?
Yeah.
So it's always been.
Probation prosecutor, uh, well, we didn't pay the prosecutor, that was. Anyway, so that's, um, yeah.
Okay.
Any, any constitution or statutory, we pay the statutory. Uh, okay, so, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same side, motion.
Thank you. Okay, so then. The Carroll County Redevelopment Commission, Attorney Barry Hamilton has given me some appointments for next year, they would appreciate, um, to have these done by December or at, in December or November, uh, they're gonna have a couple people, the commissioners appoint, are going to be different and we like most of the projects coming up, anyway, they'd like for us to do this sooner than later. So, the two that are on the board right now are Paul Ryder and Josh Plouffe.
Are they asking us to make those appointments down for a time? Uh, I don't know. Doesn't matter to me if you want us to do it, I, I would like to continue to serve.
So would I. I've now made Scott Ayers.
Beth, who makes the nominations, is it the council or the, uh, in the public?
Council makes the appointments, and if anybody can tell them what they want to serve.
So I mean, I mean, can the public make a nomination for somebody on the council?
You can't directly, certainly ask them to do so.
Sure, 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 sure. I, I'm, for what it's worth, I have a second, Doc Stopper's. Motion or whatever, appointment or whatever.
Yeah, the first motion on the floor was by Ethan Brown for the existing, correct, for the existing members.
I'll rescind it.
So we have no motion.
Both Doc Stopper and you.
Again, then Doc, they may not have heard, I just made a nomination.
Okay, so we have two, two seats. Well, if we have multiple nominations, maybe it's better if we just wait till December is in, where we're gonna still handle it now. So, yeah. Uh, Eric, how would we?
You get as many nominations as there are.
But do we do it by seat, we nominate for each seat or nominate?
Well, the two seats are equal, right, there's no difference in the seats.
Correct.
So you get as many nominations as are available. And once those nominations are made, if you got three of them, you throw it down to two, if there's two of them, you throw them in. So you gotta get the nominations on the floor before you can vote, and if you only have two, you only have two.
Okay.
We must fill up as, as full as it needs to get, based on motion in section. Second.
Do the current two seats have to be nominated as well?
They would, if we're looking, they're up for replace, or they're up for removal or replacement, right annually, so.
So does that have to come in the form of a nomination, or does that have to come in the form of, yes, I'd like to continue to?
Well, you gotta have a nomination, everybody can nominate themselves, you know, and then there's gotta be a second, and that puts that name into the upper, and if we have more than two, then we're gonna have essentially a little election.
I'll now make Josh Plouffe.
Okay, so I have a nomination of Scott Ayers.
Do we have a second on Scott Ayers, please?
Second.
I have a nomination by Larry Stoffer, second by Ethan Brown. Uh, Scott Ayers. I have a nomination by Dr. Stoffer for Josh Plouffe.
Second.
Seconded by Paul Ryder.
Nomination from Paul Ryder.
And I have a nomination by Ethan Brown for Paul Ryder.
Second.
By Ethan Brown. Seconded by Tim Radcliff. Are there any other nominations?
So.
You take them from the top, all those in favor of Scott Ayers signify by voting, understanding that you're only gonna fill two spots, so. So go through it, see where it runs off.
So we have to make sure that no party votes more than twice.
Well, if you're voted for two, you shouldn't be voting for third.
That's what I mean, just to reflect the record.
Maybe make a motion for two people who consider, I mean.
You can't, it just gets more complicated because then you got an overlap of two possibly, how do we do it, one at a time, we got two seats to fill.
So, um, we would need a roll call vote.
I would.
And then, and then that way we can validate that no member voted for more than two.
I think that's true.
Members.
Right, I mean, everybody understands it would make sense to vote for three.
Or that you can vote for three, but then you have to, you have to do high cards or arm wrestle or flip a coin. Lipping a coin is actually the way you would solve, flipping a coin is actually the way, the way you would solve it, if there was a literal.
We have to have a roll.
I'll do flipping all of the coins. Yes, we do.
Second.
Okay, so motion to close nominations. Uh, by Dr. Stoffer, and then Tracy's your second, Tracy's second by Tracy Martin. Uh, all those, or is there any discussion on the motion to close? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, so first nomination is Scott Ayers, um, okay, and just, just so we re, make the rules clear, every member may vote twice, because I mean, you, issue will have to vote twice, but every member may vote.
Maximum two.
A maximum of two times, like a roll call vote, uh, to, to validate that those votes are being issued for. So, um, hold on a second, I need to. So.
Got your names?
So we have Brad, yeah, Martin, Dr. Stoffer, Sal, Ethan Brown, and Scott Ayers, sorry, pause down here a minute. Okay, so, I will just call for each person, and then we'll do a roll call, so, for the nomination for Scott Ayers, uh, Tim Radcliff.
Nay.
Nay. Tracy Martin. Doc. Dr. Stoffer.
I don't understand.
You get, you get two votes, two yays votes?
No.
And so, uh, this is for Scott Ayers to be the appointment.
Yay.
Okay, so it was nay, nay.
Yay. There's a little song in there, something. Um, nay. Ethan?
You just voted nay, sir.
Correct. Scott Ayers?
What'd you say?
I said yay.
Can we just say yes and no? I need to do it before.
No, it was my vote.
No, and then Scott.
Yay.
Yay. Okay, Josh Plouffe, this is the nomination for Josh Plouffe, Tim Radcliff.
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds weird. Uh, Dr. Stoffer.
Yes.
And Tracy, you were yes.
Yes.
Josh Plouffe, yes. Eva?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, all right, so now we will go to Paul Ryder, motion, so the nomination of Paul Ryder, Tim Radcliff.
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Dr. Stoffer? Yes. Josh Plouffe, yes. Ethan Brown?
Yes.
Scott Ayers?
Yeah.
Paul Ryder?
Yeah.
So. So, uh, Josh Plouffe will be appointed with six yays, Paul Ryder, one, two, three, four, five yays. One, two, three, three yays for Scott Ayers.
I agree with you.
So that would, that would be the entirety of it, correct? We have one removal and then the two existing would be Plouffe and Ryder. Okay. So we don't need a motion, that's the vote.
No, you just took.
So, all right. Our nominees will remain, uh, myself and Paul Ryder for twenty-two. Carol? You have anything else, Beth?
Yes. Information on additional. I had someone come to me after I had messed up today. I'm just gonna tell you what happened, I did not get the additionals advertised for today, so I went ahead and advertised them after we did a special meeting on November twenty-second, I don't know, just didn't make it to the comment, I don't know, I remember doing it, didn't happen, doesn't matter. Um, my fault. And so then after I did that, and timely, then I had another department come up to me and say, hey, I'm gonna need money by the end of the year. So I did some investigation with the D L G F, and I asked them when the additional portal closes, and it closes December seventeenth, and that's after our December sixteenth meeting, I will just have to get everything posted by that day, um, and that is why you see the additional to be advertised, the corner has one that needs to be approved to be advertised. They asked why I wait thirty days to get permission when, you know, it's gonna come out of a certain fund. And I said, that was your, your rule, and waiting thirty days is sometimes crucial in emergencies come up. They did tell me that I can advertise it if I know where it's supposed to come out. So I went ahead and I did some of the additionals on my own, and that's American Rescue Plan, when I came back from conference, we were told that we had to advertise that to spend any of that money, the only thing we're going to spend right now is professional services for Barnes and Thornburg. I put it all in that because that way next, next time we can just transfer whatever we need to do, but right now, the whole amount needs to be appropriated. I went ahead and did the nine-one-one because I cannot have a fund in the negative at the end of the year. Um, and so she means that that was not okay by you. I did put the, uh, edict in both places, uh, because the commissioners wanted that advertised for next year. So, you can do that in December, we can approve in December sixteenth or, or the edict, or you can wait till January, does not matter. But, um, and I think the reason it's changed is because I used to have to do a fiscal paper and email it to the D L T F, and then they had time to approve it, and it took them ten days, we never really got to put the money in our funds until after they approved it. Well, now I did all online on Gateway, and as soon as I put it in there, it's approved that day. So I believe that's why that's all changed, so I was, I was worried about the corner and her budget, so I just did some reaching out to my D L T F person and asked when the portal closes, and luckily it's the day after I made them in December sixteen, so. But we gotta remember emergencies do happen, so if you are upset that I went ahead and advertised it, I'm sorry, but you have, we have emergencies sometimes.
Would it help moving that thirty days down to fifty days since we were both?
Yes.
Since topics are.
It doesn't matter, you read it once a month.
In general, it wouldn't help, I think.
Well, it really would depend on what the call.
I don't understand why you have to approve for it to be advertised, myself. Only when, except for these conditions is when you know that, I don't know whether you might wanna take it out on a rainy day, or Riverbowl, or if it's something unique, but if it's coming out of county general, normally, but then on something like this, you might wanna take it out of something else, I don't know, but that's the thirty days, if I could go ahead and advertise it, I'd have to advertise it ten days ahead anyway. And then you can tell me if that makes me any pay, I don't want it out of county general to advertise it out of Riverbowl, so be it. But if it has to come out of P S A, or Cambridge, or Highway, I think I should be able to get those organized and get them advertised for the meeting coming night. But I have, still have to have ten days, so sometimes they don't give them in that early either, so. But things happen in a short period of time there, and, um.
Do you have a reason for her, I mean, to bring it to us to?
It's always been, uh.
Well, it helps to know where we're at.
I don't know. Been that way ever since I've been here.
How many times have you ever heard, say, what'd be best if we not hear them over there, I mean, I'm just trying to look at why we couldn't change this.
There'd be no state law requirement that she has permission, you have a local policy practice that you follow, and she follows it, because as the fiscal officer for your body, you can, she can do it on her own, and then the question is whether you would say, hey, wait a minute, we didn't get permission, but we're not gonna prove it, and that's the ultimate control.
To Beth's credit, her partnership with this body is healthier than previous auditors' partnerships with the previous council bodies as well, so, policies that were in place previous may or may not be applicable to what we're trying to accomplish today, I, I just would like to be able to understand and have a voice in where we advertise out of, if and when there's a question.
Well, and that, if there's a question, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it because I don't know, and like, if you look at those, the prosecutor has to come, I mean, comes out of county general, I'm sure he wouldn't take that out on a rainy day or whatever, or if I had a question, I would, I would give the president a call, say, hey, where should I advertise this? And it's kinda like the transfers, the transfers by state statute says that the auditor can transfer within, but you have an ordinance that we go by. I don't have a problem with that, because I think, I want you guys to decide, hey, you can get that furniture out of wherever, or whatever, that's not my call, and I understand why that's like that. Except for the ten cents and the fifty cents.
I mean, how, if you think about the past years, how many changes would we really have made of what she was saying, where we would want it to come out of somewhere else? I can't think of maybe two or three at the moment. So do we have to do like an amendment to something, to a policy to do this?
We actually have an ordinance on transfers, I don't know what we have on. Do we have anything formal?
I, I really do not know about that.
My suggestion is.
Can we investigate this in the morning?
I think you should. Make it, make it, uh, we've got email, and when she sends it out and says, this is what I'm doing, let me know by, you know, four o'clock if there's a problem. Pretty, pretty, pretty equivalent to what you're doing right now, it's just more expeditious, so.
Well, I'm not sure I could send it out to all the seven, and ask permission to do something I would probably just.
Just when there's like the big question, like you said.
Because that's taken a vote, isn't it?
But you could ask him, there was a question.
I think, I think the council president makes her decision.
Okay.
But I will check if there's an ordinance.
Absolutely, you can't do it anytime long.
Anything else, Beth?
I think that's a lot from your county auditor.
That was a lot.
That was a lot.
Okay, Benny?
Morning.
Morning.
Is that time of the year again for me to come in front of you for, to do the ordinance? For me to be able to spend my perpetuation fund to fund my office? I've got the copy of the ordinance that was done last year, I do have my affidavit and my sworn statement stating that we are in good financial situation to cover anything that arises in my office, and just asking you to sign the ordinance so I can do that, I will have my, I will have my sworn statement and affidavit notarized after we do the ordinance and stuff.
And that was sent to me and it was just a matter of changing dates, we kept it the same, and I think, were you gonna go get it?
Yeah, I didn't go print it out, I didn't. So the ordinance, um, to twenty twenty-one dash one oh three. And last year we didn't put a dollar amount in there because we had spoken.
Sorry.
I think y'all know I'm pretty fiscal in my office and I don't spend when I don't need to, I haven't bought paper for my office since two thousand nineteen.
There you go.
Because I bought enough paper ahead of time and.
And like, how smart you look now?
Well, and with the things, and with us getting so much online, more people are searching on Doc's pop and not using our paper, they're using their own paper to print stuff off, so, um, it's saving us on buying paper and stuff for the offices left, so.
Way of the world, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, right now, when I went in the office, we were back to ninety forward, and right now, we're putting nineteen seventy-two and seventy-three deeds on, so we've gotten that far on backloading of our deeds. Um, I had a company come in and they, um, scanned, and they're indexing for me some miscellaneous documents from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen sixty-eight, so when I get that done, my miscellaneous will be back to sixty-eight.
Trust and stuff like that?
Uh, miscellaneous are real estate contracts, um, back sometime before the seventies, surveys were done as a miscellaneous document and not specifically put in a survey book, um, so, and if anybody does, uh, I like a name change with the state of Indiana, like they were Josh Plouffe Incorporated, and they chose to change to Plouffe Incorporated, that would come through and that would be, would have been recorded as a miscellaneous document, um, back in the day, so, um, that they're working, I mean, they're working on indexing those boards right now.
What's the end?
What's the end?
Yeah.
What's the beginning?
What's the end of the word?
Eighteen twenty-eight, eighteen twenty-eight. And I do have the same company that, um, scanned those books and scanned all of my deed indexes, um, in two thousand nineteen, because all of my deed indexes are available on Doc's pop that can be searched, so if somebody's doing genealogy, or they're wanting to do a homestead, uh, for their home, you know, their family home, this farm for a hundred years, they can actually let, they, they can search our indexes online, and it doesn't cost them to search the indexes on, online. So then they can get, you know, booking page and stuff, and they'll still have to come in and get those, but, um, I do have them giving me some quotes on doing some other books for us in the future. Because we're, if we run out of paper in the basement, and then if I did it all microfilming, I'd have to print it all out or send out microfilming. We're into the books now, so it means we are just for us to have them come here and scan the books for us and do that, so.
Move to approve twenty-one dash one oh three ordinance.
I see.
Okay, uh, motion is by Paul Ryder, uh, Tracy's the second, Tracy Martin's second, any discussion? Thank you, Benny.
I'll have these signed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the County Health Insurance Fund, um, we discussed this, uh, last year, then we discussed it again during, uh, budget. What we have to do to execute this is have a motion that establishes the fund, uh, and then Beth will in turn pay claims and pay proceeds into the health insurance fund instead of receiving those into county general. And so, uh, I talked to Jackie Clements, uh, who is our advisor, uh, and she said that the appropriate action is for the auditor to, and you can't do an intra-fund transfer, but every department who has, for which we have budgeted those funds, uh, budgeted health insurance funds, they would, uh, the auditor would cut a check for that amount, take it out of their line item, and it would be, buy a check written into, uh, the health insurance fund. So, uh, the thing that I think, uh, is going to help the most with this, for the employee's perspective, is it gives us a very clear, method, probably method is the best word, to determine whether we have adequately funded this, and then we can check the balance of the health insurance fund, and as it goes up, we can charge, there's a number of actions that we could work to, we could charge less co-pay, you could add another HSA, disbursement, I mean, there's a number of things that we could do for the employees, once we begin to budget just for the health insurance in that way, and then hopefully, you know, if we have, uh, good experience, maybe we can begin to decrease the cost, uh, the overall cost of having to budget on an annual basis just for. So, um, I would entertain a motion.
So would that continue in every year, I mean, the every year you're gonna put it on into their budgets?
And then.
Same thing, same procedure?
I mean, not for version, excuse me, uh, same procedure.
So there's no way to budget it just into a health.
Well, you could, but like, like the county highway, the separate fund, health department separate fund, we have multiple, you know, general fund. So each of those would have to pay in for that, pay out of their own.
I'll make a motion to establish a health insurance fund.
Hey, motion by Paul Ryder, seconded by Ethan Brown. Any further discussion?
So essentially, we're putting all this under one umbrella instead of each individual department.
Right.
But we still have to budget it that way, correct?
Right, and so this is the big benefit, like, we're seeing it today, like, the nine one one. Okay, so nine one one, small department health insurance, or the health department's a small department. Carroll Manor is a small department. And they have to pay all their own claims out of the, the amount that we budget per employee. So if you have a bad claim at Carroll Manor or nine one, or you're seeing it, she has forty-five thousand dollars that she has to do an additional. Well, that forty-five thousand dollars is the money that we have left in that fund to budget for future equipment costs. And so this is a great example why that's a, this, the status quo is not good budgeting because the council decided how much money and how much rate we need to put in there so that we would have the money to buy the next radio system when it, when it became a need. Well, now we just spent, spent those dollars out of there because we didn't have a mechanism like this, so. But it's an additional out of our own fund.
Right.
Right, which we.
We're not spending it out of.
No, no, I'm saying, there's nothing we can do. That's cats out of the bag. But this would, that would fix this problem that we're seeing right now. It aggregates all the county employees into one disbursement, not an individual department.
But you're still gonna keep track as the planes come in? Or like how many are charged with a plan for the highway department or how much are for the health department?
I don't know that we would.
Because how, wouldn't you, wouldn't that be valuable information when you budget how much?
No, that's the, that'd be exactly opposite of what we're trying to accomplish this. Because if we did, if we went to an anthem plan or a standard plan, it would be per.
Well, I think she just wants to know what was.
But you wouldn't do that in that either.
That can be done. I mean.
That could be.
For the dispersments, I can make a special line out of that one fund. He just wants to get it into the one fund. But I think we could make lines.
Which is county, yeah.
A code or something that would be.
It's based on per employee, correct? So, well, the plans are for each employee, but I mean, for, but if it's a highway employee, the plans are made out of separate funds, but it's health, right? I'm just wondering if that's the reason. And also the stop loss reimbursements and prescription reimbursements, I think that will go, those monies will go back into the plan. Right on you there.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side? Motion carries. Okay, there's, as it's a time here, the additionals are to be discussed that there, we can't be voted on until a special meeting on the twenty-second, so. I think we can wait till then for that. And then is there any opposition to advertising the coroner or the editor?
Mr. Blue, can I at least, I've been sitting here for an hour and a half now. It's gonna be two minutes late to my court hearing. Can I at least talk about my son to come back on the twenty-second? Anybody? All right.
I'll be quick. So, a little bit of criminal procedure here. So when an officer sees a crime committed, he will detain that person for that crime. We then draft probable cause and submit that to the court. If the court finds probable cause, they will sign the charges and set bond. An arrest is not a guilty plea. We presume innocent until a trial, till the state proves beyond a reasonable doubt that you're guilty. The methods of that are either the defendant can plead guilty or we can have a trial and the jury can find them guilty. If the judge sets a bond that the defendant cannot afford, the defendant can file a motion for fast and speedy trial. What that means is the trial has to be held within seventy days where the case has to be dismissed and the defendant has to be released from custody. Back in June, through June and July of twenty twenty-one, we arrested three people for the crime of murder. The judge found probable cause for those offenses and recharged those three individuals with those offenses. They're presumed innocent until we have a trial. And they have all requested a trial at this point. The first one, the first defendant filed a motion for fast and speedy, and so it's been fast tracked, except for December thirteenth. Set a week, maybe a week and a half long trial. In order to try that case, there were fifteen hours of recorded video and audio statements, whether phone calls, interviews, those kinds of things. In order to be best prepared for the trial, I believe that those things need to be transcribed so they can be submitted to the jury. Can't submit a video to take for the jury to send back to the jury room. Can't submit phone calls, it's just improbable then to listen to those things again in the jury room, plus our jury is not set up for it. So I had those transcribed to basically to paper formats. And that's what I'm asking for the additional for. We had some money in witness fees and transcripts. We spent that. It went above and beyond what that cost. And so that's why we're asking for the additional for that. The first trial is December twelfth. The second one is set for January twenty-fourth, I believe, and then the third one is set for March. All three individuals are charged with murder. This occurred in Florida back in June of twenty more, someone may know about it. And so that's the reason for the request for those transcripts, the additional, we need to pay for those things in order to be ready for trial. The fuel maintenance is, I don't know if you have questions about that, but that's just what we need to be in the rest of the year, the fuel maintenance for you investigators. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so we've already, there was no objection to the advertising, so those can be done. Any other business? Oh, yes, there is one other piece of business. The commissioners have crossed, have requested that the council approved ordinance to purchase a building. The building is the building that the investigation center is currently being housed in, it's under a lease. I believe the address is fifty-eight ten Ninth Street, Delphi. For them to proceed, we would have to sign, or we would have to pass this resolution so that they can proceed to get appraisals.
So are we, so we're just basically given a permission for appraisal to seek an appraisal?
Well, to, to continue the process of purchasing the property, the, I, this is just my personal opinion, Eric can lay it on us. This, this is the first check so that no taxpayer money gets wasted. If there's no intention of the council to approve or an appropriation for this, then there, then any money that they spent on an appraisal or whatever else would be a waste of money of taxpayer money.
Yeah, I agree. It's just, it's just a green light to proceed. You would have the final appropriation power in the future. Ted Johnson indicated that the total for the two appraisals, which are required, will be under five thousand dollars. And so this, if you pass this, it shows your interest in proceeding, getting the appraisals. And those appraisals will be provided to you. The commissioners will decide whether they actually want to make the purchase. Purchase price can be no more than the average of the two appraisals. And then you will have the option to appropriate unless you see fit at that time.
And has anyone indicated a potential sales price?
I believe not, but I, I don't.
Could have happened and I didn't know about it.
Did you repeat that again?
Yeah, just wait for the appraisals.
So the purchase price cannot be what?
Cannot be more than the average of the two appraisals. That's why you get here. They're separate independent appraisals. You take those two numbers and average them and the county can buy it for no more than those two appraisals. Doesn't mean that you necessarily pay that.
I'm making a motion to approve the resolution to look into regarding the possible purchase of the industrial property of Camden, Camden, Ohio.
Do you have a resolution number for this, Beth? Would it be one oh four? Oh, that's right.
One oh one.
Resolution. Twenty, twenty-one dash one oh one, resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Paul Ryder, seconded by Ethan Brown.
This is the same building that the current investigation center is housed at? So this would materially change the twenty twenty-two budget for the investigation center?
So is there any debate on the motion?
I don't know. I mean, there's not really debate. It's not because of the information.
Well, the debate would be, is it worth spending, what, five thousand dollars on, if there is, if there is no chance that anybody wants it, would, would appropriate the presumably hundreds of thousands of dollars to acquire it later? Like, if, if that's not a thing, then there would be no reason to spend five thousand taxpayer dollars to get an appraisal on a building we know we're not funding.
We're gonna use this building, and storage and so forth in connection with the investigation of it.
Tobe, is there any plan or anything, or can you enlighten us on what's going on, or?
It's my understanding it's the official offices of the, you know, mayor and the coroner, which includes one of the buildings which is.
So this is coroner's office.
To, we have the county purchases that building, then you don't have to worry about the master of the contract as far as renting our current space for the investigation because the county can double it at that point.
And who else can be a coroner?
I've, good, I've got three hundred, close to four hundred thousand dollars of equipment set up at the fairgrounds right now that has been acquired since I came into office. By getting it under some type of cover, help it last a little bit longer than setting out. But if it's not viable to purchase, I understand that. I will keep looking at other means.
It's sitting at the fairgrounds in Florida?
Yeah, all that equipment that's out there, it's, that's a charter.
That's a tract.
I, I'm all in favor of an office for the coroner and the storage and all. I'm opposed to, absolutely opposed to establishing more than Joe Collier, completely out of that need.
Well, my, my, we, this is my thing. We, we could have purchased a very large storage facility in Camden two years ago for a very attractive price. And that was, that was, that was killed by the commissioner. We, we signed similar ordinance and the commissioner stopped it. This is, I, I don't have a price. There's just a serious lack of information here in terms of what's being presented to us. I would, like, I, I don't know.
I can give you the basic information that I know on this.
Oh, sure.
It's a fifteen thousand square foot facility. That includes what the investigation houses right now. It's set on three point five or three point seven five acres. It's on, it does have city water, but it is on the septic. And it's, let's see, there's two different, there's NISCO and then there's also an LP because of the runners that he has out there. They use LP gas. But he also has NISCO as well.
Is there a price? You don't know anything about the price?
There was some prices thrown out and I told him that we can't really discuss any true prices until the appraisals are done.
Yeah, I, I mean, just my perspective, I'd like, if, if it's, I don't know, I mean, it could be a million dollars, it could be ten dollars. Like, we have no frame of reference. So what we're being asked to do is spend five thousand dollars on maybe that there's an appropriate price, so.
Well, it, not the five thousand, it did come in out of the commissioner's budget.
Right, but it's still taxpayers' money, I mean.
I agree, I agree.
Jake?
But I think, I don't know how you move forward on anything unless you, I mean, there's studies done, there's appraisal studies. I mean, in order to prepare a crime before it, and I've heard about this situation since I've been on this for four years. I don't want to be on the council that sits here and just keeps, just hearing the same stories. I mean, if there's a, if there's a building that, I mean, there's not a lot of buildings in Carroll County, we found that out. So if there is an option to get some information, I'm for, I'm for it.
So how do we rationalize spending this when we, we're, we don't have enough money to build the jail? That, that's my question.
So if we can't, we don't have enough money to build the jail, then Carroll County just stops doing everything?
Well, I, I would say that the jail might be a bigger concern than these other concerns.
Aren't we also gonna look into funding for that for a possible loan?
Well, I mean, there, there are several things that could be done, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Like, until we have that, I mean, maybe, I'm not all, but does somebody think that this is more than a jail project? I mean, the two are somewhat mutually exclusive. I mean, there's only so much money.
Well, I, I think the counties needed more space, you know, for, for a while.
Well, I don't disagree that there's a need.
Yeah, and, and we're already renting the building, so we want to get, we want to get it appraised. You know, I don't want to be on the council that doesn't do anything either. And so, is it really five grand to, to do an appraisal of that earth?
I, I haven't done, the county attorney has done the.
It's two appraisals.
Two appraisals.
Commercial real estate.
One is needed though.
Yeah, let me just say what I know, Ted Johnson.
Two appraisals, commercial, so they're not residential, for less than five thousand, is what I was.
Right.
And I think that's appropriate, like, that's, we both just discussed this morning.
Well, you can't, you can't inform unless that's free. You can't make offer unless they know what it's worth.
And I just need for Carroll County to be at a standstill because of the jail project. Yes, the jail project is very important and yes, obviously that moved along a lot quicker than it has in the past four years. But I don't want to sit here and watch Carroll County suffer because we have to build a new jail.
So you would rather spend a half a million dollars on, I'm not just throwing out a number, I don't know what it is. Let's just, let's just say it is a half a million dollars or it's three hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't matter. You would spend that money knowing that we have planning troubles for the jail.
I would, yes.
So you would not build the jail?
I did say no. I did not say that. I said that with Carroll County absolutely needs a jail.
But if you don't have the point two million, how do you rationalize spending anything?
We can't stop the halt of everything else in Carroll County.
Does that mean we're not gonna pay the heroes because we can't afford?
Exactly. I was just gonna say.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know, that's, that's not fair.
Can I, can I ask those people one voice at a time, please?
Yeah.
For the record.
Mike, would you want to address some of the financing options that you had considered for, for this building?
How can you consider financing options if you don't know how much it costs?
Well.
The assessed value is two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's the fair market value on that facility according to the assessor is.
What was that number?
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen. That's an assessed value. That's an assessed value.
Has not been voted on or anything else?
Right, I mean, there's, there's no, that's an assessed value and, you know, assessed values from the auditor is completely different than what, this appraisal is gonna come back and what the true market value is. You know, the assessed value of my house is a hundred forty-seven thousand, but I can put it on the market right now for three hundred. It's just a way to market it harder.
So to answer your question, Josh, if it came back that they, that they, he wanted five hundred thousand for it, you're right, that is an awful lot of money for a piece of property that they're looking at, and I would not probably go for that. But I'm not, I don't want to hold up aggression when it could be a very vital and a good deal.
So nothing happens.
Just for years.
I mean, there's, this five thousand dollars is a flop. And it's, like, I, I just feel like this is being moved very quickly and we don't have any information.
You're not.
If you could, if you tell me what information you want, I will do my best to get you the information.
Well, I, I would like to know the asking price. I mean, that's the biggest thing that I want to know.
That's what we're.
That's the appraisal.
No, no, no.
The purpose of appraisals is to get a cost, right?
I, I don't know that there's an asking price.
He gave, okay.
I can't say one or another.
That don't stay.
All I understand, again, I'm getting this.
He gave me a price and it was high. I'll tell you that. I'm not going to give you a number.
When the appraisals come back, he's going to look at those appraisals.
He gave me a number.
We can also only offer their appraisals.
He gave me a number and it was high. We had a discussion again. I came and I said, look, there's no movement on anything until the appraisal is done. And that, plus I, of course, I can't make any, you know, sound judgments for the county anyway. I don't have that power. But an appraisal has to be done. As soon as he said, we started talking about appraisals, he came back and said, well, in his opinion, he thinks the building will praise for such and such. And I said, let's wait until we see what the appraisals are.